Hello, Mike. Good morning, good morning.
Morning.
Uh, seven thirty, we're ready to go. Welcome to the April mid-month. Planning Commission meeting. For Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. Um, we have one item on our. Agenda today. Are we going to review any upcoming? Thanks.
Hey.
Good see.
Drew is prepared to read the kind of the hybrid script and then I can do a review of our.
All right. Drew, would you take off with that, please?
Morning, everyone. Name is Drew Billby. Enter, and I will be helping to facilitate the Zoom video portion of the meetings. We will work alongside the vice chair to facilitate the meeting proceedings. I have a few housekeeping items for this hybrid meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on City's YouTube channel and cable channel twenty-five. Please remember to mute yourself during the meeting when you are not speaking. The chat function for this public meeting is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. Unless you are participating during the meeting, please turn your video off. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. You will still be able to hear the meeting. When you are participating, please turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat to me. This, the city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. And now turn the meeting back over to Vice Chair.
Thank you. Becky, do you want to talk about upcoming items?
Uh, so yes, uh, we've got our upcoming. Uh, April planning commission meeting in a couple of weeks and we'll be meeting on Monday and Wednesday. Um, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth. Did I get those dates wrong? Let us double check there.
Yes.
That's right. Okay, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth. Uh, on, um, we had a number of county applications come in, so we're, uh, we've split them between the days. So on Monday, it'll be our county applications and on Wednesday will be, uh, city applications. So on Monday, we have, um, three C conditional use permits that'll be, uh, coming before you. Um, we do have our, uh, first solar, um, application. This one is for a limited scale solar energy conversion system. Um, it's, um, uh, proposal would be twelve point six acres.
Okay.
Um.
Interesting.
And then the other two, um, applications, uh, a conditional use permit for an outdoor sports and recreation use. Um, this one is, um, more associated with, um, uh, uh, outdoor, uh, therapy that's provided to, uh, uh, kit. So it's not a, like a sports arena or something like that. Um, and then there's a, it's conditional use permit for a vacation rental use. And then the last item on that Monday will be a rezoning application. The request is to rezone, um, approximately twenty acres from the AG one district to the AG two. And then on Wednesday, we have, um, a number of applications that are associated with plating. Um, we have two preliminary plats. And then, uh, and there is one variance associated with one of those plats. And then, um, there is a, another variance that's associated with a minor subdivision. So you'll see, um, two plats and a variance, and then a variance is associated with an administrative application. Uh, both of those variances are about, uh, related to right of way width. And then we have a zoning application. Um, this is for, um, property located at, uh, twenty-three fifty and twenty-four hundred Franklin Road. It's currently zoned planned in desperate real development. Um, and this proposal would rezone them out of that planned development into a, a based zoning district, a, a limited industrial zone district. Those are your items you expect.
Project associated with that zoning request, I imagine?
Yeah, not at this time, but the, the, um, uh. Not at this time, but there is, um, uh, we have received an application for us, a site plan, but that, um, uh, request, uh, is being prompted by a, um, a desire to develop with a RV boat storage there.
Okay. Sounds like a busy week.
Yeah, we'd like to keep you busy.
I'm not sure it's cookie busy, but it sounds like. All right, thank you for that. And who, who will, uh, who will lead us in the? In the mid-month topic?
Well, I think it's going to be a, um, um, organic and staff-led discussion. Really, this is a, um, uh. You know, it's noted on the, the, the calendar, this is a, um, orientation refresher. Staff kind of recognizing that we have a number of new commissioners now that have had, um, an opportunity to have some meetings. Um, under your belt now and might, um, uh, have questions for us now or, um, uh, maybe under, it, it, with that experience, kind of, um, have a different, a new take or a new light on, on this information. I know when we, we get together for the first, um, orientation meeting with staff or the, um, I think that a number of you were able to attend that, the, um, planning commission orientation, it's, it's brand new and, um, uh, and if you're like me, you hear every other word and you might not remember. A third, uh, two thirds of it when you leave. So we just kind of wanted to touch, go back and touch base now that we've, um, had some more of that. Uh, some more, we've had some more opportunities to have, have those, uh, meetings. And then, um, also, you know, take advantage of our, um, uh, other commissioners who have, um, uh, more experience, more expertise behind them. Um, that can also offer some, some insight, um, to that. So we did have some, um, uh, specific, uh, topics, I think, that staff wanted to touch on, but also just wanted to note that this is um, an opportunity for you all to ask questions and talk amongst yourselves and get that, that feedback. Um, so I don't know, Jeff, if you wanted to, if you had anything specific or?
No, we've been just recognizing that I think seventy percent of the commission has come on in the last two to three years. If maybe a few years at that point in time, so we thought it'd just be a good chance to having a full-blown orientation, have a slightly smaller style one and you have to answer questions. We can talk about the meeting and the procedure and the process, the bylaws, which are always a, an interesting topic. And there's some things that we can chime in along the way, but if you'd like, cause we can kind of just maybe launch in and kind of help.
Launch in, I think that would be great.
Prime the pump and we'll see where it goes. So, you know, a couple of things that we recognize that have recently happened is, you know, there has been instances of new information or, or un-unreviewed information brought before you in that point. And I think it's always good to remember that's covered in your bylaws on, on the discretion of that. So in those instances, the bylaws actually said that the applicant should make a timely request to deferral the application item in accordance with your bylaws. Now, if they choose not to do that, the chair may bar such information, such new information, and the commission shall consider the item without the consideration of that new information.
I think it went through a scenario.
Uh, you know, if somebody brings something to the podium and it's not been reviewed by staff and they're saying, please approve this and what you see in your packet.
Staff being an applicant.
An applicant can also be, you know, might have something where it typically going to be an applicant by truth, you know, be, yes, on that one, because it's something that we would not have had a chance to review. And quite truthfully, that's a, that's a concern for staff because we can't guide you. We do not know if it's code compliant. We haven't put it to the experts, you know, it engineers or our utility partners, we just don't know the outcome of that one. So that's a good instance, take a look at something probably for a deferral or, you know, if you think you have enough information in the packet, consider it with what you have in the packet at that point in time. But I think that's always a good one. That's one that we tend to lose track of in the bylaws because it happens so infrequently, but we've seen it recently a couple of times. So I wanted to kind of highlight that one up. Um, the other one that seems to be a little bit more of a deformed practice with the board than anything else is the closing of the public hearing. So when the public hearing is closed, you know, the public testimony will not be taken with exception of a commissioner that asks a question or a clarification to a comment that was done during the public input process that, that period. That's really to kind of preserve your opportunity to discuss and review the information that has come up. Kind of take a look at all that information instead of bringing in new information repeatedly that may restart a discussion or may not have any bearing on the discussion. So those are some things that we've kind of, we don't talk about a lot, but I think we've seen a little bit lately. Just wanted to highlight those up. Of course, the other one is, um, the age-old thing that we get is, you know, in, in, can we discuss changing the amount of times to things? So your bylaw outline is.
Changing the amount of what?
Number of times that people have for items and discussions.
Okay.
So your bylaws have a standing amount of time. Let's say applicant has ten minutes to a maximum of thirty minutes to discuss an item. The public representative group or themselves have three minutes and then the rebuttal from, from the petitioner is five minutes at the end of that. There is an original in the bylaws that says the chair may change the length of the presentation or discuss them to ensure the orderly conduct of the business. A decision may be overridden by a majority of the commissioners present. So the chair doesn't necessarily need to call for a motion to it, but if you want to say, yeah, no, we want to go back to the original one, that would take a motion and a vote to adjust. Okay, so those are kind of procedural things that we tend to see come up that we all, I know I forget them about every third meeting because we don't do them very frequently. Um, and for Fisher's Carpenter and Ashworth and Carter also, is there other procedural things that you've seen over excuse me, seen over the years that you had highlighted something to maybe talk about or, you know, other items?
Excellent. Question, Jeff. Uh, so the ten to thirty minutes, that's the initial time for the applicant. It's not the total time, correct?
It, it's the total time for the presentation.
The initial presentation.
Yeah, like thirty, thirty is the maximum that is set by the body.
Okay.
Now, if it needs to be changed, the chair has that ability to change it. That doesn't include questions or, uh, you know, discussion that may go on and need more information. That is not inside that time bound.
Okay.
Never rebuttal after.
Sure.
That.
Five minutes.
When does the request for deferral have to happen?
There is a very particular language about deferrals. Um, if it is typically has to happen prior to your packet being published. I don't have the, the bylaw right in front of me on it. But if it's published, then it has to come to you and you have to look at it for the deferral and see if it meets your marks for deferring the item. And there's a very specific language in the bylaws about how and if it can be deferred. Typically, what we would do is most items would be deferred before the publishing of the packet because that is an opportunity to have that clear and not have to come to the meeting and then you have to act on it there. Very rarely have I seen one come that we tried to act on it mainly because of an instance of where the applicant was unavailable because of an emergency or, um, in one instance, it was that the information was so, so quickly developing after the publication of the packet that it, no, it never kept up. And it wouldn't have been fair for you to hear and it would have been fair for them. And so we, we advise you to defer it in those instances, but it's a very rare instance for a a deferral to come to your meeting and make that request.
Yeah, I'm asked to that because recently there was one, there was a request for a deferral from the applicant after public comment.
Yes.
On the, uh, appearance. No.
So this, so you've been talking about, uh, deferrals. Um, that we, we sort of say that we, this is new information. We need to defer this because staff hasn't had the time to press. But what we've had is applicants request a deferral. Or we ask the applicant, would you like a deferral? That's where I'm, I'm a little unclear on.
Well, that would be our motion because we can, one of our options is always to defer. So we can either, but.
But, um, in instances where the applicant is.
When the applicant's asking, that's a different thing.
As opposed to the applicant asks, we still have, I mean, it's still an option that we have.
It's an option. Because that's one of, one of the things that can always be done. So it can be deferred.
Yeah.
And whether we do a vote yes or no with recommendations or without.
We just, we're not allowed by our rules to give weight to applicant's request for deferral.
Uh, if, no, it's, it's like they come in and they see the handwriting on the wall. They didn't, and staff, they come in, they see the handwriting on the wall and no, we want more time to go back, talk to the people we should have talked to three months ago.
But there's criteria involved in.
In that form of a deferral. Now, the commission, this is always one of those little quirks in the way the code works. Deferrals don't show up in the county zoning code or the land development code. They are a function of your bylaws. It's section two C in there that says the commission may table or defer any item, including after the public hearing has been closed, when it is determined by the commission that such action would be advantageous to the commission for responding to issues raised and for gathering adequate information to make a well-informed recommendation. So if you're hearing something and you're not hearing the information, you need to make a, a well-informed decision, you, you are allowed to defer an item. Now, again, we always would caution you as beware that does have time constraints around there. You know, you can't defer indefinitely. It's going to have to come back, but that deferral may not be immediate. It may be, instead of it, you know, it deferred in April, it probably won't make it back in May. It'll probably be a year, June. That's another two months that an applicant is enduring to, to go through that. But again, you do have that available. If you don't have the information to make a decision, you can defer.
Can you defer indefinitely or does it have to be the next meeting? I mean, how does that calendar, how does that work?
Typically, you'd want to defer to the next available option. And we always kind of advise that the applicant may not be available for the, you know.
Right.
The next one, they might want to go three months. That's okay, but you really don't want to defer items indefinitely because that is kind of not taking action.
Because of the notice requirements.
Right.
It's not going to be, it's going to be two months, a month.
Yeah.
It, by the time we're supposed to issue your the papers, you're already having by that point. So it's very twenty-day notice in there. Out of a Wednesday meeting and get back to you in that next month. The time between can your, did you see your April meeting? So your April and, and ready. Description at this point. Meeting is almost I mean, by the time the staff is working views and eye compass and all the things that kind of make the packet ready, it's pretty close to being at this point. So we're looking at June by that point, by the time we're aging out again. So it's kind of a, you kind of work in a sixty-day calendar is the best way to describe it. And so by the time you're seeing, it's already been with us for about sixty, if not longer, or come again. So by the time you ask for April, say defer it in April, probably come in June, you know.
Can I ask a, just, exactly, give you an example and just say what we should have done in this case?
Is it a pending case before the body?
I think so. No, it's, it's, it's the antenna thing. Uh, in, um.
Oh, near, uh, Vinland.
Near, near Vinland.
Sure.
By the airport.
By the airport. So on that one, um, the applicant said, you know, we've engaged the FAA, but we don't have a final approval from them. And we decided that if we waited for the final approval, even the defer, the deferral would have been too late. Like they wouldn't have got the approval in time of the next meeting.
Right.
So we decided to vote no. So in, in other words, it felt like we didn't have, um, we couldn't defer to the time, to give them enough time where they would ever receive the okay from the FAA. So we said no. So it, it seemed like that there was a, there was a cutoff, like we couldn't go beyond a certain date. You know what I mean?
That, that's a good one to bring up. We kind of touch on a little bit is that would be a bit of a you have to look at your decision-making criteria and the boundaries of the commission, but you can and cannot invoke on the discussion there. In that instance, deferring because of the FAA would not have been inside your decision-making criteria because that is governed by federal government. They have their own process. Now, you have to have faith that process will be reviewed and unfolded there at their escape rates. But you can condition it upon the approval of that. So in that instance, you'd have to look at your decision-making criteria, which contains nothing about an FAA approval. And that's how you would have to ground a decision on, do we have enough information to firm or deny, or do we not have enough information we need to do? So what typically happens is we talk about these about like their code interfaces. It's the best way to describe it. You have a provision of local land use code. The state will have a provision of their code. The federal government will have a provision of their code. You're not able to condition or look at other levels that are doing those reviews and, and say, you don't have this one. I can't give you this one. That's not in your decision-making criteria. Your decision-making criteria is usually listed out in your staff report and will say, here's what you're able, this is your sliver of the pie. Does it meet the mark? Yes or no? And if it does?
I see.
If it does not, the other direction on that one. So that's a great one to bring up there. If there would have been something like and I'm going to reach, I'm just going to pull something out of thin air because I can't remember all the details of the case, but like say there was an endangered species or, um, been an asteroid strike or something that occurred there. We needed to do an excavation to it. I'm really trying to think of something. Then that may be something because you may say, well, that's a land use thing. That's clearly, we got to take a look at this from the land use. You have some, it's in our decision-making criteria. I don't know if asteroid strike is in our decision-making criteria, but it's in our criteria. We need to look at it from this point. Now, if NASA comes in and says something else, that is beyond you. That is for them to decide and go through that process. But if it's in our code, that's where we got to hang our hat. And we'll say, I've heard this come up at the city commission recently and the county commission recently too, is they're always looking for you to have discussions about your decision-making criteria. Those things that are in the code that ground it back to what you can and cannot do as part of the codes that you're looking at. So I would always, I would always hazard, or excuse me, always, you know, advise you all that the hazards of going away from those are, are are, there's some problems with that, but it's always a good idea to kind of look back on those and go, is this in our bounds or is this not? Because you'll hear people mention that we need a four of engineers permit or a, uh, EPA review. May not be, may be absolutely right, may not be in your purview, but you have to have trust that those boards and those divisions will do their processes. And so you can condition or, you know, have a look at them or take those in. But you can't really affirm or deny on somebody else's outside process in our code.
You don't really even have to condition certain things.
Correct.
Like a telecommunications tower. Our discretion is moving it here and there, but that's about it.
Gotcha.
And, and, and whether we say okay or no, it's not going to happen if they don't.
Welcome to our meeting.
It's not necessarily a second nature.
We had a slightly unexpected power outage that blinked the power and knocked us off for a minute. So sorry about that.
Now, I was telling Commissioners Kelso and Munch that I felt it because I'm only about five blocks away from you guys. And I, I felt a little flicker in the lights and I thought I'd lost the connection until I saw Commissioner Munch move his head and I thought, oh, it's not.
I think we were, I can't remember exactly where all the power chaos ensued. I think it was, it was talking about this, the, uh, you know, the decision-making criteria. And one of the things that we'll, we'll take a look at with the orientation packet and your upcoming November, October, November day-long thing is a way of trying to, um, I want to say kind of condense for the lack of a better description, you know, take those things, you know, what are those decision-making criteria in those certain cases? Because you have about thirty different cases you could review at any point, depending upon what it is. We'll pull that down, take a look at that, give you some of those parameters around, you know, here's your decision-making criteria. Here is the appellate route for that one. Here is, you know, all the things that we tend to talk about and we tend to want to ask those questions about. We kind of have them in your packet, but trying to just put them all into one thing that is a little clean, easy to read, and you can just have it available at any time. So something we'll, we'll work on in that one. And I say that with a little bit of a, as a prompt here is if there is a format or a template that the commissioners would like us to kind of mimic that around, we're more than open to doing that. We've never done one of these. So if there's a particular way to lay it out that'd be best for you all, we would love to know it because we want to make sure it works for you just as much as everybody else.
So there are criteria that we shall use to make decisions on. Remember the language in the bylaws correctly. It didn't exclude other things from being considered, but you do definitely need to use these.
Which?
Whatever it might be.
Which type of case are you referring to?
I was just looking at the bylaws in general.
Now, the, the decision-making criteria will be application and district-specific, depending upon what you were reading. So a county rezoning will have very similar language to a city rezoning, but they may differ slightly. Language in a CUP may differ completely from what you'll see as a special use permit in the city. So it kind of give you the insight to how we don't even really have a general set of decision-making criteria. We have to go through, figure out our county or city code. This application type or that application type, and then we see what the decision-making criteria is in each one. So every application, every version of the code will have a different set. And that's what you always see in your staff reports, this kind of enumerated list of things is that thus showing our work to you is like, this is how we've reviewed it. These are the things that we have saw. This may have been something X, Y, and Z. Here's our, here's our recommendation. And as you all know, in most of the cases in, in golden factors, rezoning, special use, conditional use, one of your golden factors tends to be professional staff recommendation. And so you'll always have that as the very last one is, you know, this is what we're recommending based upon our read of your decision-making criteria.
That's the one that specifically in the case that set those criterias or any other information that's relevant. So that's for rezoning.
Now.
Variances are different.
Yeah, those are, those are hardwired, right?
Variances, annexations, amendments are hardwired into state statute. Annexations you recommend at the practice of the commission. They're not obligated to actually send any annexations to you at all. They could just annex away under state statute. They do it because they want to have your read on the comprehensive plan, your understanding of the wholeness of what's going on. They don't have to send it, but they do. Only governed by state statute on the process steps and outline there. You also sit as one of the, I can't remember, there is another number off the top of my head, but it's probably less than a dozen joint city-county planning commissions in the state of Kansas. So normal planning commissions that are just a city planning commission or a county planning commission have a different framework under state statute than you do. You have a separate framework. And so what we always work from is that it's always called like a third framework because you have a city, a county, and then a joint framework. And so your framework is a little bit different, which means when you review comprehensive plan amendments and those kind of things, you're reviewing it equal footing as the governing bodies. So it takes your approval as much as their approval to get an amendment through the, through the mark. Or the zoning appeals is rooted totally in state statute in, in almost every instance with a very slight exceptions is you have to meet all the marks of the variance request. And if, if you meet two of three, that's equivalent to a denial. You have to be three of three or five of five, or in the case of floodplain, fourteen out of fourteen. You make that mark. So if it hits two, but not the third, that's a difference discussion.
And as I said, they're sued on one on whether or not they actually made findings that they met all five in a particular case. So there is a district court case right now based on that.
So on, uh, on, on controversial, um, things in front of us, like let's say it's a quarry or, um, a landfill or something like that. Um, we'll have a hundred people come to the meeting, usually neighbors, and, um, we, we get to hear their point of view. We don't often hear what's in the public interest, like, you know, as, as a county or, um, the community, what is, what is the benefit? We, we hear that, we hear a lot of the, and sometimes the applicant will make the case and say, here's what you're giving up by not proving my application, but sometimes it's not a strong case. It's just on the factors. They'll say, well, you know, this neighborhood supports what I'm trying to do and that's why I want it. Would it be something where staff could advise the applicant, if this is something that is in the interest of the community, can you make that a part of your case, get a part of your application? I don't know if that's, but because we, we, I don't know that we get the full picture. And we're trying to do the right thing for the whole community. And so anyway, that's something on my, in the back of my mind that I think about a lot. I don't know how to handle that.
Watch, watch meetings. Watching meetings, watch the city meetings, watch Ahab, watch every meeting that you think you can stomach sitting through. But there, it's really convenient with YouTube because you can just let them run while you're doing other things.
At two X speed.
You know, or, or even faster, but you, so that's just part of.
But you know what I mean? Like we're often, we often see what's in front of us.
Yeah, but I, your, your point's correct. You have the applicant that says this is the best thing in the world and you've got neighbors often that say, that's the worst thing in the world for us.
Right.
And we balance those all the time, but part of that is based, what do you know about everything that's happening? The quarry is an unfortunate example because Udora sent city commissioners, city manager, school board. The community spoke pretty strongly on that one. That was.
So that's a great one maybe to click into. Um, I was, uh, famous as being the only person in Douglas County that, uh, voted to support that as a land use. Um, and I did that.
You voted for that.
And I did that not because I thought that it should be next, or that I didn't care about the impact of that rural subdivision. But as I go through the golden factor, the, the criteria that we're allowed to consider that we're supposed to make our decision on, I want isn't in there. It's just not. It's not a part of a land use decision. It might be a part of policy. But I'd love to have people's thoughts on that.
Now, when you, how do we, how do we? End on Udora's land use policy?
How much, how much weight is? How much, how much weight is given to, um, a resident who is opposed to a thing happening? Not from, again, our job's not policy. Our job is just, is, is it a land? Is the land use appropriate or not? Uh, how much can we, how much should we, how much are we allowed to give weight to community members who may not want it to happen?
Well, like in that case, as Jim said, it wasn't the community members. But, um, I mean, obviously I was concerned with the, the communities, but it was the fact that it was another entities.
It was every political subdivision in that area, including the township. I mean, came and spoke.
Based on what criteria did they?
Based on what criteria, future land use plans.
Their maps showed their map and didn't have, this is, this is the maps that they brought. I understand.
What's in front of us.
All we have is what's in front of us.
Those are some types of hardest decisions I've seen planning commissions have to endure is as part of the process is because you're hearing things that aren't in your purview. That's so, because they're not land use sometimes decisions. They're the, the city commission or the county commission because they are financial. There are broader spectrum things there. It is, you're all going to throw things at me when I say this, I'll duck here in a second, but we're, your realm is very narrow. It is very tailored into land use. And that's, that's really the, the spectrum at which you get to operate now. Financing and public improvements and those kinds of things, those are the governing bodies decisions. Those are financial. They have budgetary impacts. That is, that is their realm. That's their bread and butter. You don't need to really kind of go into that and to some extent, now you do look at that as part of your comprehensive plan amendments, as part of your land use planning, your, your, not your everyday application planning, but your, your long-range portfolio, your area plans, your sector plans, those kinds of things. Because that is in there, that's charged in there because you can't, you know, people have an expectation of having utilities and parks when they're in a city and that's got to grow with them. So you have to think about that. But on a day-to-day application, that may not be something that you can fully give weight and credit to as part of your decision-making criteria. That's not to say you can't talk about it or it shouldn't be raised up as a discussion point going up to the governing bodies. But you may not be able to, you know, use that as a levering point in decision-making criteria for that application. So this kind of goes back to one of the things we heard, I think, at the orientation with the county and city commission is they watch your meetings. They're listening to your discussions. So if they're hearing you make these comments when you're making motion, that hearing the, you know, that discussion after the motion, I'm going to vote this way. And, but here's some things I'm concerned about going forward. That's the, that's the point where you can interject those things. It may not quite mesh with the decision-making criteria. It may not affect how you, you know, you vote, but something you just want to say, hey, I recognize this as a concern or an issue or something to think about, but I can't weigh it up in my, my decision-making at this point. So.
Well, a good example of that is all the discussions we have about affordable housing that may not be relevant to a particular issue we have. We're, we're discussing beyond what's going on. And I, I, I think that is sometimes helpful for the city commissioner, the county commissions here, but it might not be.
Yes.
Focused on that particular.
Or you'll, or you'll hear, I've done it, Aaron did, and there were other people that have done it. That we get to the point, it meets all the criteria, but I'm voting no, because of this issue has to be discussed. And this is, David doesn't, yeah, I mean, I mean, we do that and it's very specific. They have met the criteria, but this is an issue, this is an unresolved issue and we hope that we're going to hear discussion about it. And sometimes you do, and more often than not you don't. And then we're stuck and we have to keep going.
So the no vote isn't designed to prevent the thing from advancing, but is meant only as a, please talk about this more when you get to.
We could have, we could have stopped the endowment by saying it didn't comply with the plan, but our vote was by four to let it go forward.
On which one?
The KU endowment does not comply with the comp plan. When the comp plan doesn't apply, period. Um, but you know, the votes, you have to know, kind of figure out where things are going, what, what message we want to send. There's a problem here. We need it addressed. That's one of our problems with updating the area plans. How, how can we go forward with individual applications? We don't know what's going to happen.
So I, I think the practice, or just my, just one guy's been in the practice of messaging through voting of on items tangential to or around a topic is fine to do. We've only, just in the, in the strictest terms of what we do, that's not our job.
No.
And if it, if it causes a different decision on land.
All I've done is we're trying.
Now.
One time. That since I've been on, that I recall that it, we had a bad motion and, um, it, everything got messed up, but.
Those clarity of motions become important in those discussions because if there is any ambiguity or if it doesn't, like if it's, I, um, I, when I worked the border zoning appeals, we've been getting frequently into the phrase that I had a, a VCA member say was it was muddled. It's like you, when you motion, you have to be very thoughtful in the words you choose to make that motion. And having never made a motion at planning commission, clearly I can't speak from experience, so I will lean on the, the senior members here. But you know, it's if your staff is recommending approval, but you want to recommend something else, you can't say on, based on the findings of fact of the staff report, because that contradicts the, the entire thing of your motion is because staff had recommended approval and now you're recommending denial. So you have to think through is, you know, what are you grounding that into? So in that case, if you're wanting to, you know, go against the staff recommendation, it is, you know, we recommend denial based on the evidence presented before the planning commission, the discussion that was deliberated this evening. Can't lean on the staff report in that instance. Now, if you lean on the staff report, you're going with it, then you can say, you know, based on the findings of fact and the conditions outlined in the staff report, that's okay. But when you, when you go to do a motion, you have to be very thoughtful about what am I founding it in? What am I saying as part of this? And then how does that relate up as it comes to the, the governing bodies? Because they're going to look at the motion that's, that's relayed. And if it's based on your discussion and not the staff report, they're going to, they're going to watch your discussion because that's where the, the meat of the conversation will be. Staff report is going to be the opposite of it. So.
When I think about the denial, the motions to deny, um, it's usually just that. Motion is denied. We, we don't have additional information. We don't say, uh, uh, the motion is to deny based on X, Y, and Z. We don't do that.
Yes. And I would always advise you, you should do that, saying that it doesn't meet this decision-making criteria and here's why. Or it, it's not, you know, uh, I'd be the best, the best way you could say it quite briefly is, you know, we find that it does not meet this decision-making criteria as outlined in section 20 dash 1305.
Be a little more specific.
And articulate why it doesn't.
Yeah. And part of the muddle on the creek was, my head was too bad because that would have been part of it. Because I think my comments were, it's fine up until the creek, which is one of the, one of the criteria.
Yeah.
And that's in, and if I, if it hadn't been nearing 1:00 AM in the morning and I hadn't been sick, I would have probably stated that better, but.
Same here with my comments. I mean, my comments were related to one of those criteria with mitigation specifically, but I didn't say that.
Right. Because there's always so much we can do if we got meetings that go too late.
That's always a, always an issue when you have a marathon meeting is that you're, you're going to just, human nature, you're just going to run out of energy at some point. And that's, you know, we will, staff will always try to kind of help prompt on that one. And we didn't. We weren't.
But not, not a few minutes, seven in the morning too. But the thing is on that one, it was, you know, what my intentional statement was, it meets all the criterias but for this. And this one overwhelms all the other considerations in my mind. And that's where it ended up, but with competing engineering studies, so.
I think the golden is you don't have to meet all golden criteria because there may be some where they're not applicable or they're not as weighted as heavy in a situation or an instance. So you could have a case and look at it and go, you know, it's meeting these six, but not the seventh and but those six were very important. We can see that connection and that's okay. There are, as we look at it, you go, now I need all these to, I need these all to click in this instance. They all need to be there.
But the golden factors, you don't have to meet the golden factors. Those are just items that have to be discussed. That's what the court case says. You must discuss these types of items. And it's a list of these types of items is what it actually says, plus anything else.
So almost each one of them asks the question, does this by adding a restriction change the character? Does this by removal of a restriction change the character?
The most useless one is what's, what's been the use of the ground?
Yes.
Just, that's kind of useless. How long has it sat vacant or, you know, for the current use? It's like.
Well, then vacant in a city versus vacant in a county is a very different discussion to be had because, you know, most county grounds not technically vacant. It's, it's woodland. It's, it's, it's doing something. It just doesn't recognize, you know, an urban construct as a use there. Is it vacant? You know, vacant land in cities, it's totally different.
That's sort of almost.
But not only.
Not only, that's correct.
But it's, it's, you know, that has, there, there's the only part of that discussion is really useful is is vacant land in the city really been vacant or not used? Or was it just by choice? Or does it, we, do we have demolition by neglect going on in order to do something else? You know?
So there's a lot with them. And you know, the, your decision-making theory in all the codes, I can't think of an instance where this is true, is based on golden where it needs to be. So all the things like when you're looking at a CUP, an SUP, a rezoning, those are, those are the golden factors in your code. So that's just a by default thing as we're practicing through. It's when we're doing those reviews, we're doing those golden checks on the staff report as part of that process. Those are baked right in.
How do we think about, are there rules around what we can do with subject of land value and impact land value?
You know, this is one of those things that it shows in Golden in some ways, but it's not in your decision-making criteria in the same way that it has, it's put out in Golden, if I remember right. Cause I think Golden says something about, um, here, it's the, I may not have the wording quite right on this one. This is, this is notes I've got, but it, the relative gain to public health, safety and welfare by the destruction of value of the applicant's property as compared to the hardship on other individual landowners. The protection of the public health, safety and welfare is the basis of zoning. The relationship between the owner's rights to use and obtain value from their property and the city's responsibility to its citizens should be weighed. Believe that's the, the fullness of, of the actual case there. Now your decision-making criteria says, you know, what is the benefits of the health, safety and welfare of this? Should this go through or not go through as part of that discussion in there? I've seen lots of academic studies over the years for property values. Now there's, I'm not an appraiser and I got to preface it with that. I dabble in numbers, but I'm not an appraiser or anything, is the appraised value of a property and what its resale value of property could be is not identically the same thing. Because what it is appraised for will probably not change. Now the expectation of income out of it may change depending upon the market or depending upon conditions. Changing the value necessarily, because most times you look at it as terms of an appraised value, not an expected value. Now, again, not an appraiser, it's not my specialty. I'm not a lawyer either. But that's, that's the kind of differential that I've seen over the years as part of that discussion is, you know, every, everything can potentially change in appraised value, you know, market conditions that are beyond someone's effect could do it. Uh, weather conditions, law proximity to things that are far beyond control of anybody else. So it's hard to say what goes into that, but that appraised value is, it can sometimes be different than the actualized value or resale.
Almost always.
Almost always. I would say, yeah. So I'm not sure if that helps.
Just look at your own house, go to Zillow or go to one of those sites and look at what your house is appraised at and what the estimated market sale price is by one of those companies. And you'll see they don't match.
So if we got, in District Kelsey.
Well, I know that I, I brought up that specific topic when we were talking about the quarry in Udora. I brought up the, the, the property values and the risk that it posed to the longevity and the support of the school district. When we're talking about that we don't want to change or damage the character of an area, particularly in, in a, a small town. And I'm not saying it's not the case at Lawrence, but in a small town like Udora, that prides itself on the quality of their schools. If that quarry were to pass and property values were to be damaged, that could cause long-term damage to the schools, which in fact changes the character and, and damages the character of the schools. So can we legally talk about it in, in an aspect such as that?
I think you can talk about it, but the key is there, is to always hinge back to the decision-making criteria and, and look at that as the way to make the linkage to it. And, and Mr. Kelsey, yours is a very, very good point on that is that those things can have an indirect or a tertiary impact on things down the line. And you are able to look at those and, and take those into consideration. But you just always need to bring them back to is, is that in that decision-making criteria? And how do I make that connection? And what is the logic that I'm using to come to that conclusion? That has to be articulated and said based upon when you're making the motions or you're having that discussion.
Okay.
Just, just remember, we're just, we're just making a recommendation. So if all those discussions such as, I mean, from your insights, from having been on the school board, it's great to get that in there because that's helpful information to the ultimate decision maker at the county commission level. Because they get to think about all of those things. So, you know, where we, your vote might be as a planning commissioner, maybe opposite of what you're actually saying sometimes of what your concerns are, but you're getting the information to the next level of decision-making. So that's, that's where that is valuable.
Technology's failing me, but in the Golden Factor, I think it's the fourth item where it talks about, I guess the removal of restriction and the impact it might have on the character of, of a neighborhood. There's a specific call out that says it cannot be based on fear, must be based on fact.
Yes. And it, it says the focus should not be, trying to get with the actual words instead of.
Yeah.
Talking to, the focus should be on facts, not fears. It should be based on issues that zoning can address. Examples given are allowed uses, minimum lot size, heights, setbacks, traffic, et cetera.
In almost every case where an infill or something's being done, I mean, yes, I can't, there's so few items that come before us where there isn't someone who feels that there might be a negative impact. And there's a fear of that. But is there really actual fact of that? And how do we get at the fact of that? If, if there's no evidence other than just someone, I, you know, I think this is going to happen. How much weight do we provide to that?
Very philosophical question. I'm not sure I'm going to have a great answer, but I think.
Yeah, no, no, I don't, I, I, and forgive me for, for interrupting Jeff. I was just going to say, I think that becomes a practical challenge of time versus resources. Because facts can be substantiated with the right statistics, but the middle of a meeting, especially like 11 o'clock at night, is not the time to, to prove that point. And so, and some of the, the, the conversations we've had, um, you know, both with applicants and folks who, you know, oppose an application can be really frustrating when they're trying to base their case on one-sided facts. And anybody who's gone through, you know, a reappraisal like for refinancing or something can, you know, has, has had the experience of their property seemingly being undervalued because they're not taking the right, you know, from, from our perspective, the right, um, what, what's the word I'm looking for? You know, comparative cases into account. And so, um, I mean, I, I find that a, a real frustration. And I, and in that respect, I find it almost impossible to deal with because, uh, you'll hear from an applicant, you know, uh, it's sort of the absence of evidence is the, what is it? The, the absence of proof is the proof of absence. In a way that is logically almost indefensible. And yet you don't have a counterfactual to argue. So I just think that's, you know, making those cases can just be frustrating to the point of, of, of uselessness. Sorry, I don't know if I've made, if I've said anything that makes sense, but I just, I just find engaging. Sorry, I don't know if I've made, if I've said anything that makes sense, but I just, I just find engaging in that kind of thing extremely frustrating because most of us can't come up with the right statistics in real time.
What I heard you say was it's hard.
But I mean, for me, I think that that's part of why we exist is to, we have these discussions. I mean, the decision makers, most of the time we are recommending to the next body. They're the ones that are making the policy decisions, financial decisions. So we can have these discussions so that they hear it.
Right.
I mean, and it could be that we end up voting, um, not really how we, uh, just the example that Commissioner Kelso just brought up. So in our narrow right criteria, this is how I'm going to vote. But I've had this discussion over here with other commissions about all this other stuff that I'm concerned about. And I think that's part of the reason we exist.
Yeah. All right, Jeff, back when we raised hands to vote before the era of Zoom. I've had comments. I, I do, I half hand raises and I'd hear the comment afterward. It was like, it's because it met the criteria, even though I think this is going to be bad news.
A half heads up. It was wound down.
Yeah.
I have, I've voted that way many times and it's like, oh, this is, this is going to be bad.
But those discussions.
Because in my head, based on experience, uh, we're going to see seven, 10, 12 times they come back to staff to change what we had, thought we had agreed to. And by the time it happens, it's something totally different. Or the rezonings happened and it immediately goes up for sale. And God knows what happens next. Some of those are still for sale out there that have certain approvals. So it's, because it's not always what we hear is what's really going on.
Yeah.
And, and one of those that's was the golf course out by Udora. What was presented to us was not what was really going on. Cause we provided alternatives and then it went away because we didn't do.
You guys got that completely right. Completely right.
So those are, and that just comes from experience and experience with the community. And that's why I, I keep suggesting pay attention to all the other meetings, pay attention to what's happened. Look back sometimes. Staff is great. All our reports talk about all the prior times that this property's been discussed. You can find those and see what's, see what's happened. If it's one that you, especially if you've got, we're here in opposition or something, well, what happened in the past there? And it doesn't mean you're going to have to talk about it all the time. Our meetings aren't long enough for that, but the information is there. And read the staff reports very carefully. If it looks like it's like really going to be a controversial one. Cause sometimes the word choice by staff, there are messages contained in the staff report. If you know what you're looking for, especially if you're familiar with who's writing them. Then you can tell, um, this is, this is inside stuff. I mean, it's writing styles sometimes change, you know, whether it gets strained or not. It's like, eh, not quite sure about that. Sometimes you can tell just by the language choices in the sentences in the staff report.
Well, I'd like to, well, when you're, when you're done, Jim, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, I, I think one of the fundamental challenges that we as volunteer members of the public volunteer commissioners face is that, and, and you know, um, staff, please correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this, but your relationship with applicants is to try to facilitate what they're trying to accomplish within the bounds of what policy allows. You know, they're coming and they say, I want to accomplish this. And you know, you'll present to them constraints and say, well, you know, based on the code, that's not an acceptable, uh, use. But there may be alternatives through some other use or some other, uh, application of the code. And I think that as, as a, as a commissioner, my perspective is that's what accounts for the vast majority of the things coming before us are recommendations to approve. You know, if, if staff's job was just to take the application at face value and make a recommendation on what that initial proposal was, we would see a lot of, a lot more recommendations to deny. But it, you guys are planning and development services. Your job as a service to the public is a, I think it is a tip in the direction of a service toward the developers. And, um, in that respect, as a commissioner, I think we are sometimes a counterweight to that mandate. Where, you know, just where I think we are tasked sometimes with taking things a little bit more at face value in terms of their overall impact on the community. I welcome somebody to disagree with me.
I, I, I don't disagree with what you said. I guess I, I, my perception of it's been a little bit different. I think particularly as someone who's brought a minor application through the process in the past, the wall of things you have to get through and as a small business, the expense that you're faced with can, can, can almost shut you down from the beginning. And what I've seen is staff work with people to get from, oh no, you're not compliant with the requirements at all. To if you do all of these things, if you make these changes, if you, if you adjust, you know, in these ways, we can, this, this, we think we can make a recommendation for approval, but it's not necessarily a lean to them as much as it is the support of applicants to find their way through the regulations to a point where they can make a positive recommendation.
So I'd like to ask a question of staff. If a neighborhood group that was opposed to, um, you know, a particular type of, uh, proposal came to you and said, you know, we really don't want to see this in our community. Uh, and we think, you know, these five things, um, uh, work in opposition to our interests. And to what extent then does PDS, um, engage with that community group to say, well, you know, if you argued this or that, you'd have greater success in opposing the development. My impression is that's not really common, but that is sort of the, on the other side, uh, taking advantage of the expertise and experience of staff to achieve a particular outcome. In that respect, I do think that the, and so, forgive me, I asked the question and just said, you know, if, if a community group came and said, hey, you know, can you help us oppose this? To what extent would you feel that was part of your mandate?
Part of our mandate is no matter if it's developer, neighborhood group, somebody coming in with an application is to say, here's what the code says, here's what is possible. Here's what the planning documents, you know, see is in the future here. That's kind of our role is this kind of walk everybody through, doesn't matter if you're for or against or neutral on an item. Here is the process, here are the codes that are applicable, here are the plans that have been in place. And here's the more detail, if you have any questions, give us a call. So it's really, it's our role is, if you think about it is we're here for everybody, doesn't matter if you're, you're for, you're against, or whatever it is. It's our role is to say, here are all the processes, here are all the codes that are applicable. Here are all the things that you might want to take a look at. Now, we're not going to, you know, we can't make an argument. I mean, you're going to see the staff report and our, we're going to do a review and a code review of that one. But it's, that's our role is to have those discussions. And typically you'll also see us do is, is if we have projects like that, is we will always try to work and maybe be the facilitator of a meeting between the two groups to say, hey, you know, this is, this is the project and here is the concerns from the neighbors. And can we all maybe have a, have a quick hour long meeting and sit down and, and talk this through so everybody has all the same information? So it's not uncommon that we facilitate those meetings and help get those discussions underway.
So I guess what was the, so I, I, I know David, you're on several screens. One I am looking at.
I'm not in several screens, I'm just in one chair.
You're everywhere, you're, you're everywhere, you're everywhere here. So without a more of an explanation. So, uh, some group comes that is opposed to something. And they come to you, they come to somebody here and say, help, show me in the code how I can oppose this. Without a lot of explanation, is there a yes or no to that?
Usually we point people to process because it's most often denied. It's not a decision that staff makes.
Right, I'm, I'm not saying they would agree with it, but are there things in the code based upon what I'm bringing to you that you can point me to that would help me deny this project?
We, we allow requests from people to say, why does the code say this or what is the plan? And we will point people in the direction of, you know, here are the plans, here are those things that we can help with. Now, if you have a question about it or you would like to know more, come, come back. We don't know maybe what it is, but we do try to help, you know, get people the information that they need.
Because based upon what you said, you see the planners as saying, now if you would tweak this, if you would change this, if you would look at this, that will get it to more of a yes. Isn't that what you were saying?
The experience that I had with the small SUP request a million years ago, I had no idea what I was doing. I had no idea what the code book was. I just, I had a business that I wanted to do a thing at a place. And we came in and said, we'd like the permit for it. And I said, okay, well, this, this is the path you have to go. And after throwing my fits about being told what I have to do, they helped me understood what the code was and, and what I needed to do to be playing with that. So we did. Um, it, it was, it was honestly as simple as that. So what I, mine is a really simple example and my first time through. What I've heard from other folks that go through the process is that it's not so much that there's a lean towards getting to yes, that's the intention isn't that. But if people have a project to get through and the code is what the code is, they can help then work together in partnership with the developer to craft an approach that meets the city's requirements.
A lot of times we'll get a, a request will come in and it'll be a pie in the sky, I guess is the way to phrase it. It'll, it'll be way up there and they're asking us, you know, what, how does your code respond to this? How does your code view something like this? How does your code even define this type of a use? And so for every application that you, the board is earning appeals, support resources, commission. We have what's called a pre-application meeting. And at that meeting, we, you know, introduced, here is the code, here is our processes, here is the board. And then we kind of have that conversation with somebody and say, hey, you, you're, you're saying it's this type of a use, but our code actually calls it this specific use. And so that then is a conversation about, here is the code application process that it has to go through for approval. And here's the reviewers you want, want to talk to if we don't have it in the room. You know, you want to speak to fire prevention, you want to speak to the utility, you want to speak to municipal services and operations or county public works or anybody else, because we don't know all the nuances of, you know, every road code and all kinds of things. We can get you to those people and have those discussions. That way you can have a full understanding and if you want to submit this application, here's all the things that are applicable, here's all the process that'll be there. And here is all the things that we're going to be looking at that the code asks us to review as part of this process. Sometimes they come in and they're, you know, one of the great examples in the land development code is there's a use group and they're called personal improvement. To this day, we have discussions and planning about what is personal improvement versus personal convenience? Because there are two defined uses in there and you could look at one thing, someone go, well, that's an improvement. Another person could go, that's a convenience. And so when you're coming to the town and you've never seen that before, it, you meet with staff. We will help go through those definitions and say, you are this use, it goes through this process. Here are the things you might want to look out for on the site. Here are other entities you'll want to talk to. So it's not to say that we've already prescribed a, an approval or a denial to, who we have it. What we're trying to do is just give everybody that's coming in the best information possible, the, you know, all of the routes that they can consider if they would like to move forward. If it's a special use, a site plan or a rezoning or whatever it may be. And just say, here's all the things that might be out there. If you have any questions about that, give us a call. We're always here to help and answer the questions. And if a neighborhood group has that same thing, we do the exact same thing. If this is, this is the use that they're proposing, this is, this is how we think it meets the uses defined in our code. This is the process they will have to follow. Here are the public meetings, the process.
I think that works really well. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. I, I, I think that works really well on policy. One thing I'm, I'm more skeptical about is when it comes to disclosure because of, for example, the radius of notifications and also the advance notice, like how, how much time neighbors or folks in the surroundings have. First to familiarize themselves with what's being proposed and then to develop their own perspective. Uh, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's a great policy question for the governing bodies.
Nice, nicely done, Jeff.
And it gets even more complicated when something comes to the planning commission. And then the information changes between our recommendation and what's presented to the planning commission. Like suddenly we have maps, suddenly we have this, suddenly we have that. And how much time, how much notice has gone out about the additional information and time for, um, the neighbors or the public to digest that? And I mean, I've seen things end up at the planning, at the city commission and there was information that would have been useful to us. We would have had a different conversation. And so the whole thing is different once it gets there. So again, what are the subsequent notice requirements? You know, every time, because they don't have to submit new information until the cutoff deadline, which is noon prior to the, you know, Monday, prior to a Tuesday evening meeting. That's zero time for anybody to be able to digest new information before it goes to the city commission.
Part of what we always want to do with applicants before it lands on, on your desk for your time and deliberation is we always advise them is you need to put all your information forward that you have because that can, that can be valuable for the planning commission to make the review and the recommendation. Now, you know, there are code standards that it says you have to provide this information. And they, or most applicants will always provide all that information and some will even go above and beyond and provide more as possible. But what tends to happen then is your discussion and your deliberation gives them information that they hadn't considered or they hadn't thought about. That's where you see some of that information come back up. State statute requires for most, for most application types, a 200 foot notice, a 20 day notice in the paper of record and a sign be posted. Our code requires a 400 foot notice or, uh, sorry, 400 foot notice posting in the newspaper and assigned to be posted. What we also do is we put everything that we receive online every week. So we have a map on our website and you can pull up at any time and see all the applications that have ever been submitted to the office the last week. And so that's our way to try to get that advanced notice out to go through those, those details. Cause you know, sometimes we'll get an application and then it won't show up on your agenda for maybe three or four months because the applicant is, is working too many projects or, you know, needs to revise something pretty heavily. So they ask us to wait for a minute while they figure that out before it comes to you. So we do go through the noticing procedures and you'll see it in your staff reports. These are the procedures that we follow, those are the noticing. But you know, the question of how far to mail or, or how long to mail is, is really kind of that discussion for the governing body. Because I've seen communities that do a lot of noticing and then no one pays attention to the letters because it gets finished. Who's tracking what's the really important ones? And I've also seen when they send too little information and it's, you know, you've only got 24 hours notice. So it's, you do have that kind of that bar in the statute, but it's really a question about is how much mail do people want to get? And the other thing is like, you know, you find out today is most people don't, there isn't, they don't take the newspaper. They're not getting, they're not really checking their mail, their physical mail as much as they are email. And we don't have a lot of email communications that we can send because statute doesn't recognize email very well. It recognizes a mailed letter. So it's, you know, things are there probably.
You mentioned, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You, you mentioned the governing body, but you've also mentioned state and local. And so I'm curious, like, to what extent does the local governing body have jurisdiction to extend notification requirements over the state? And my other question is, is there a differentiation between rural and urban notification radius?
There is a difference between a rural and urban notification. And so if a, if an application is in the county, it is quarter mile, I think, or how do you appeal for notice? Initial notice gets sent to a much larger area than 400 feet. 400 feet is only within the city, within the county, it is thousand feet. And so that goes out on those network. So the state sets the minimum bar for notice. Cities can go above and beyond that if they choose, they just can't go beneath it. So if the state sets the bar at 200, you can't do 100, but you can do 400.
Got it. Thanks.
So it's, it's really to kind of set that, that minimum to it as part of that. And the statute sets a, a time for published notice. published notice, a time for posted notice, a time for mailed notice and distance for mailed notice. Excuse me. So.
So where Charlie was going, the state statute sets the area for protest petitions, right? It's 200 feet correct in the city. That's it. Even though we had our discussion, I can't remember how long ago it was, but we extended the notification area from two to 400 in the city. We had talked about going farther, which I think for certain projects we should. I think there are certain projects that the notice should be much bigger because of their impact. Um, which is coming up in the solar and wind about notice areas because the impacts of those can be felt much farther out. So what should the notice area be? So there are discussions about extending the notice area, but as far as protest petitions, it's still set by that minimum of, of the state statute. Yeah.
So yeah, protesting and appeal statutes are all governed of the state and those are are pretty well baked in at that point. Now our codes will mimic those. So there, if you're appealing or protesting something, that's kind of set in there.
Right. I think the protest area for the county is a quarter mile, but the notification area is a half mile.
I think yes.
But it can be extended in the ordinance for a particular.
Petition boundary to, to protest in the county is still a thousand feet.
A thousand feet.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a.
The notice boundary has definitely been substantially extended.
Yeah, that, that's, I think that the hard thing for sometimes the public to understand is notice does not equate to the same under the, the, the process because of the way that the statute is, is structured. And that can be hard to do. We run into that with the city quite frequently too, because I've got the notice, but I'm not, I don't have standing to, you know, protest.
Can they notice found a change project to project depending on the project?
I believe, I believe it can, but it has to be in the code, in the code as part of the process. There has to be something driving it.
You know, another examples of that today, especially in the county code. So there is an extraordinary notice set out for communication towers over and above a normal conditional use permit um, within the city limits um, per uh, an ordinance and an approved plan, the Inverness Art Plan. That has a requirement for extraordinary notice over and above what the minimum standard is. So those are those examples.
Just kind of to keep in mind, we've only got about 10 minutes left before the, the hard stop that is the next meeting coming in. So I just don't want to ruin a good conversation, but I also want to just be aware of the time boundary there is coming up in case.
Bring up one other thing about we've had many things brought before us that essentially asked, change the rules for us on this one application. And you know, we want this variance so this doesn't apply, blah, 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 whatever, or we want to do this. I mean, the options. One thing to keep in mind is where you stand on. Do we look at it project by project? Do we look at rules that apply across the board to anybody that may apply in the future, which is safer legally? You know, and there are options of getting there, like text amendments and other things that then would apply to anybody coming forward with a similar type of problem. So instead of, and this came up with conditional zoning until the rule changed. But that was my main objection to what conditional zoning was. And then it ended up, we changed the rules, you had to exhaust all the other avenues. So you could change the overall code to apply to everybody anywhere. And that's how we have mixed use zoning right now in our current form of conditional zoning. Both of those were designed to do that. Because mixed use was one property, came out of one property in North Lawrence and turned into a text amendment. So it applies everywhere. And uh, the conditional zoning, turns out there are three different ways it had been used. I think, can you put together the list for me? Somebody put together a little bit. Yes, I didn't see any of that one. How did it find it was the hardest part? But it turned out there were multiple ways of being used, which was eye opening to me at the time. But I, so we ended up with a way that was consistent. Uh, I, to me, it's always important if there's consistency in how the rules are applied. Doesn't matter who's in front of you. It doesn't matter how shiny or bright or newfangled the object is. And you be consistent and don't get distracted by something that seems new and fantastic because maybe it is, maybe it isn't. Here project, that was bad. It was all relied on, it relied on one, one supplier for robotic parking. One who went out, who went bankrupt, which is still causing problems. Causing meetings with KU right now. So it's, it's, you know, watch out for the shiny object and.
I have a procedural thing because one of the things that Jeff just brought up was um, questions from the audience. And I've tried to make it very clear in meetings that, you know, once public comment is closed, it's closed. I make sure that I say that a few times. I hope I do. Um, so when, if the public wants to speak again, I'd ask all the other commissioners to say, you have to have a specific question for a specific audience member, not just like so and so wants to speak again. I mean, you need to find a question. So if you can find a question, I mean, that at least sends a signal that we're not just going to call on hands raised. It's just going to be please have a question for a specific audience member and that would be really helpful.
I think I asked for a comment and you said, do you have a specific question?
Yes.
I said, whatever the person was, it said, what did you think of what you just heard?
That's, yeah, that's really open ended. I mean, I, I don't know. I think it gives a signal that people can react continually.
So sure that. And if it helps in the bylaws, it says, may ask a speaker a clarification on raised. Not sure if that helps or hurts, but does, that's your bylaw like. Say that one more time. May ask a speaker for clarification on a point raised in that public comment period.
I think one way to address that could be to, you know, take good notes. And if this is somebody who gave public comment and if there's some particular issue that they raised in their public comment and you want to be able to connect what they said to what was expressed, you could say something like, you know, how does what you heard affect the issue that you brought up about this particular, you know, issue?
There was an example last night with the city commission towards the end, there was someone in the crowd had made a statement about the impact of certain years of flood. And that person was asked to come back up and just restate what they had talked about. But it was very specific to something testimony that they given.
I'm not good on this one because I just want to hear it all. And the more people feel they're heard, the easier it work goes down.
But I think, I think it's uh, to ask a specific question or to address a specific issue.
Yeah, well, I'm also.
Yeah.
Finish your comment when you get cut off at three minutes. And there were only four of us here when we had our subcommittee meeting. And I think Sarah Polinsky came and summed it up and said, essentially it is a slap in the face to the community to limit them to three minutes.
Yep.
That's been an argument for as long as I've been in attention because we've had time limits, then we didn't have time limits. Now we're back at time limits and now they're set for everybody at the same amount. It used to be different time limits, five minutes for an organization, three minutes for an individual. We've been through all kinds of permutations of that, but we get to the chair and the commission, we get to, you get to choose what you want to hear. And you have to be careful when you choose what you want to hear. So it's not biased. No, it's not one sided. You gotta, you gotta make sure that, you know, that everyone's heard and not one voice dominates. So and perception is reality. As it, those that worked on the solar and those of you who now working on the wind, you're going to know that more than anybody else that's ever been on these planning commissions about just what your statement right there, perception is reality.
Well, I don't know who changes the three minutes, but right now we're at.
You change, there are required change of bylaws, right?
Yeah.
You change the bylaws.
Mission can't change the bylaws.
What are the chances of, fortunately I am retired. And so I don't have to run back to a job. But what are the chances of meeting someplace else where it isn't always nine o'clock? We have to quit. And now with the current hybrid meeting rules, not as long as there's more than four mission chambers, I suppose.
Yeah, we, we're taking some looks at other options. We know this room is kind of a high throughput room, but we haven't got a good solution yet, but we are looking into those kind of details. We have been for a few months, actually.
And what are the chances of having a consent agenda? Or things like the county commission does, where any of us could say, nope, I don't want us to do that.
I think I raised that one by human.
It's in your hands right now to bring us back a recommendation, right?
Right. We're looking at that. We're trying to figure out what you can and can't do on a consent, what the details around that are, what the state statute is. So we're researching that right now.
Okay, let's be brought back to the site. What, what is that, what is that referring to? I, but introducing a consent agenda as a component of a regular agenda so that some items that might be administrative in nature. I, I, that would stop describing what they could be. They're going to come back and tell us what might or might not be in that. So we would consider them in one vote as opposed to each and every.
I see, I see. That's been having to go through multiple instances of essentially the same issue.
Yeah, yes. Yeah. And then you run into the statutory problems, you can't really put variance requests on there because of the individual findings you have to have for each one.
So that's a nuance we're working through right now.
Except the code can change that and eliminate these road width variances that are essentially administrative. But um, especially if they were building compliance with, I'm, that's on your list. If they were building compliance with the code at the time and a current site plan triggers, now you have to expand it and take property from everybody around it. How much sense did that make if um, you can still turn a fire engine around in it and the road engineer says we don't need it. So.
Lots of research on our side.
We're at eight fifty-eight. Um, can we call it a close, do you think? And let these, let the room rotate? Okay with everyone? Thank you all. Thank you so much. Take care, folks.
You too.
Are we out now?
We're out.